All right, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. If you'd please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unarrogant, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks for joining us today. It is February 3rd, Monday. This is the Broadwater County Commissioner's Business Meeting. This is where we take care of county business for our 6,000 citizens. This meeting is open in public and we welcome anyone to participate by promoting basic civility. Documents are available for review and copying prior to the meeting in the Clerkenham Courts' office. Includes in this white notebook and there's also these other big documents. These meetings are recorded. They are on YouTube and the county website. These are the only videos of these meetings that are unedited and uncut. We follow Robert's Rules of Order and county civility and open meeting policies. Under Robert's Rules of Order, all comments shall be directed to the Board Chair. Sideline conversations are welcome, but only out in the hallway. For public comment, please come up to the podium. Upon recognition by the Chair, please state your full name for the record each time you stand to speak. And that's because the people watching the video don't know who's talking. They just face this way, not that way. For public comment, each person who wishes to speak will be given an initial three minutes to do so. Finally, this disclaimer has been approved by the Commission via the Weekly Minutes and applies to all public comment. Public comment is the opinion of citizens as individuals and does not necessarily reflect accurately on Broadwater County actions, operations, policy, practice, or processes. So with that, we will start our meeting with public comment on any subject not on the agenda and that the Commission has jurisdiction over. Is there any public comment? Come on up to the podium, Ed, and please state your name for the record.
Ed Schindel. I'm the county fire warden today for this part of this deal. So I've received some information from the state of Montana. It's the firefighter property program. It's the excess property that the fire department has been getting trucks and other equipment for. That's the SOPs for it. There is a contract or a cooperative agreement that they have sent that we need to fill out and sign, and I can sign it as the fire warden. I'll let you guys look it over and make sure you're all right with that, and then I will sign it and get it sent in. And the second thing I've got is for the Fool Hen Building, the building that the Forest Service gave the fire district. It's an agreement between us and Jeff and Carla Stewart for the use of the building. I want to give you guys each a copy of that. So if you guys are fine with this agreement with DNRC, I will sign that and get that back in. And then here are the copies of the agreement we have with Jeff and Carla. Any questions?
This is more a courtesy, right? Because you're a separate political subdivision, so you don't need our permission. It's just a courtesy to let us know.
Courtesy to let you know what's going on up there.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, you guys do amazing work and thanks for what you did this weekend, too.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. Any other public comment?
Not really public comment, I guess. Winnie Hensher. I just got an interlocal agreement with, it's in, it looks like an MOU, an interlocal agreement for the detention center of Lewis and Clark County. So I don't know if we want to put that on the agenda for next week. It does require a second chair of the Commission. I'll review it better when I look at it. I thought we already had one in place, so this might be just an updated version of it, I'm assuming, because I thought we already had one. But I will email it to you guys, review it, have any questions. But I thought we already had one. So with that, the other thing is, last night's Super Bowl party for high school, for the school kids, we had 55 or 57 middle school kids. We had 42 or 45 high school kids that were in attendance. It was, for me, we had a little mishap. Kids playing football, hit the fire alarm, set that off. We got to listen to that for about 10 minutes. It was great. You know, other than that, the middle school kids were wonderful. They had a lot of energy, a lot of enthusiasm. Just, it was a good time with them. High school kids were a little rough. They just didn't, they weren't quite into it like they normally are. But Fish Tale was, Fish Tale sponsored the pizzas this year and the Mint sponsored some sodas and waters and stuff, and so we had lots of prizes from Play Again Sports and Capital Sports and, gosh, I don't know where else we had. We had lots of donations, lots of prizes. It was, it was a good time, but very exhausting. And I'm glad that's why I just remembered here. So with that being said, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Tim Ravindol, citizen, county. Been following, and thank you, Mr. Schindel, for bringing this forward to the Commission as a courtesy. I understand there is a separation of the elected bodies here. One of the things I need to bring up on this is we've been asking citizens of what's been going on with that for quite some time. And one of the things that keep bringing forward in this agreement that shows again clearly, because the Commission decides on subdivisions and easements, there's an easement issue going on with this agreement, and it states in the agreement, I just read now, dated clear back in August of 2018. We're asking for this, it's just now showing up. So what I would like to ask the Commission to keep in mind is this is county property, whether it's under this jurisdiction or the rural fire district, it is county property, and we need to make sure that everything is in order before moving forward. And the easement is definitely a question here. Thank you.
All right, Jim.
Go to more, Ann.
One more thing. I don't know if Nick sent it out. We've been having meetings regards to the public safety deal. And so we created a, having three meetings, help me with the name, I think it was Public Safety Community Input Meetings, to meet with citizens across the county on three different occasions. And I'm not completely sure, I believe the dates are February 13th down at Three Forks at Headwaters.
We changed that to the 12th.
Was it the 12th?
Well, because there's a-
I thought we were on the 12th and it got moved, so it's one of those.
It was the 13th and there's a conflict, so it's back to the 12th.
Back to the 12th, okay.
Which is Wednesday.
A Wednesday. So we'll have that down there, it starts at 6:00, I believe. And then we'll have one in Winston, I believe, on the 18th, and then, is it the 19th or the 20th? I'll get you the days. I was trying to find on my phone real quick. And part of the process of that is, we're looking at trying to do a Survey Monkey as well, to get the information from the citizens on how they feel, currently feel about their law enforcement services, what they expect to see in the future, what they don't want to see in the future, or whatever else. So we're trying to work through logistics component of that as well. Because it's in this juncture where we're at, we need as much info as we can in a short period of time. So that's kind of the path we're taking with that. And I didn't know if Daryl had a chance to sit down and talk to you guys about it, but I think we had a pretty productive meeting last week, I thought. And I thought we made some headway in how that's going to look and how we're going to go about that. So I will send some stuff out as soon as I get back to the office here this morning after we're all done here, so.
All right, thank you. Any more public comment? Public comment? Public comment? All right. Mike or Daryl, any comments to public comment? All right. We do have minutes from last week, January 27th and January 30th.
I'll make a motion to improvements for January 27th to January 30th. This is the second.
And I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the minutes from January 27th and January 30th, 2020, as circulated. All those in favor, please signify by, oh, any public comment? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks, Ann. All right, Commissioners, community update. This is a chance to let each other know what's been going on, aside from these meetings. So, Daryl, what'd you do this week?
Let's see, we, I think we all attended the update on the hospital closing. Had a conservation district meeting. And they had elections. Vic Van Dyken was elected as the chairman, Darrell Baum the vice chair, Kelly Ingles as the treasurer. Also, there's a report from Mike, was Mike's last name, the Forest Service?
Welker.
Yeah, Welker, there you go. Mike Welker. Anyway, I reported that there are two timber sales currently being proposed, the Boulder-Baldie sale and the Middleman Timber Sales. Said that if those two are approved, they can provide over, or close to 146 million board feet of timber. He also stated that RY Timber uses approximately 50 million board feet a year. So if that was proposed, that could possibly be good for those folks. 7% of RY's timber does come from the Forest Service. Had a fair board meeting, and they're all planning for the upcoming fair. Attended the public safety meeting, and I was looking on my phone to give you those dates, because I did put them in here, so, yeah. Wednesday, February 5th down at Headwaters, livestock at 6:00 PM.
The 12th.
Or the, or the 12th, I'm sorry, the 12th, the 12th. And then February 18th, and that was up at Big Bull, right? And then February 19th at the school, is that, that's what was, so all started at 6:00 PM, so. Anyway, that's it?
Excellent. Mike, your turn.
Let's see. Went to the, had a meeting with Earl Griffiths from the Petro Board for, to dig a hole at the ambulance building to get a soil sample to proceed with that cleanup out there. Also had a discussion with him about possibly using some district property and county property to store some overburden materials that they're going to dig out during that dig out, and looked at some federal government surplus property at the end of Kent Lane that we might be able to acquire for a very nominal fee, maybe used for weeds. Was going to attend the Middleman Sales, the Middleman Timber Sales meeting in Helen, but I didn't make it as my doctor appointment overran, and that was about it.
Okay. I read that about the billing that would be for sale down at the end of Kent Lane. I haven't gone, I was going to take a look at it. You guys could look at it. Did you look at it, Mike?
Yeah, it's, it's got a 30 by 30 with 16-foot sidewalls on it. It's all fenced off with chain link with barbed wire, so it's something we could probably, I don't know if law enforcement would be interested in going that far out of town in an isolated area, but we thought, me and Mike kind of thought we could use it for weeds. That building would be an excellent storage facility for all that equipment. Wouldn't be outside. It's not the ideal location, but if you got it for nothing, you can't be, that building probably worth close to $80,000, probably.
Yeah, that came to my mind, too, about, we, there's two and a half acres there, right?
Yeah.
All right, great, well, I think we should pursue it.
Yeah.
Mike was going to do some research on it, so.
Perfect. There was also a phone conference on the hospital. It was not our meeting, but Daryl and I both listened in. Really, the only decision we made was to have a meeting, which we did. And have another one today. The communication team met. We spent a couple hours, I guess it was, editing the newsletter. And kudos to the MVM Corridor Grant. I understand that was a tremendous meeting. I did not make it, I had a migraine that day, but the reports I got back was that that was a home run meeting. So kudos to you guys who went, and for the work that you're doing. So, anything further that was forgotten? All right, we're right at 10:15. I don't see Sean Higley here. I don't know if he was going to be here. This is, he gave his report and update last week, so I'm going to leave it to you guys. Do you want to go ahead and proceed with moving forward or not with Fairgrounds' master plan, or do you want to give Sean five or 10 minutes to go through mail?
I mean, I know I read through it, you guys all read through it.
Yeah.
I think that it's a good document for us to start from.
All right. Yeah, if you would like to proceed, it is 10:15, so Sean Higley, WWC Engineering, presentation of the Final City-County Fairgrounds' Master Plan.
Okay. I guess that would move that we accept the 2002 Fairgrounds' Master Plan presented by WWC Engineering?
I'll second the motion.
So it's been moved and seconded to proceed with the 2020 City-County Fairgrounds' Master Plan? Is there any public comment? Public comment? All right, with that, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I was wondering if those footsteps were Sean, or not. All right, our next appointment's at 10:30, so I'm going to take a few minutes to go through We have one item that's an action item, and it is claims. These are the approved claims from last week. And the total is $75,106.88.
We pay the approved claims in an amount of $75,106.88.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we pay the approved claims in the amount of $75,106.88. Is there any public comment? Public comment? All right, with that, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And the second piece of mail is about what we were just talking about. This is from the GSA, which is the Government Services Administration, and this is about real property. So included in this notice is a description of the property and procedural instructions to be followed if any public agency desires to acquire the property. So, anything more to add on this? I'm going to put it in mail, and you can put this on the agenda. All right. Thank you. So this will be on the agenda. It will be noticed, so if anybody has any thoughts, questions, concerns, or wants to support it, you will have ample opportunity to do so. We received a box of information from the Montana Census. I did not bring the box down, but I did bring the letter down. Thank you for being part of the U.S. Census Bureau's Complete Count Committee Program. On behalf of the state, we are providing you with a toolkit to assist with your efforts to promote the upcoming census. So there's a bunch of stuff for us to disseminate, bring to our meetings, to take to meetings outside of the courthouse, to take to different groups. The importance of the census is that the funding that our state receives is tied to the census. It's based on population. We also are on the verge of being able to have another voice in Congress, another congressperson in the House. So this is a big deal for Montana, and hopefully we can get everybody to fill in the census. Anything to add?
You know, I've been, just reading exactly what you said, how important this is to Montana and our own community as well, because this is how our funding's based. So I hope that everybody catches the census bug and fills out the forms when you get them, encourages your neighbors to do the same.
Thank you.
Yep.
We also have a notice from the National Association of Counties. We are having the first-ever summit for counties with defense installations in or near your jurisdiction as communities around defense installations grow. Leaders must work together to ensure the well-being and economic stability of local communities. This summit will be hosted at Department, the U.S. Department of Defense and with the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Environmental Protection Agency, and Small Business Administration to explore strategies. This will be held February 29th through March 4th in Washington, DC at the Washington Hilton. So this is with the National Association of Counties Legislative Conference. We also have something that was also discussed earlier. This is a notice from the National, Helena Lewis and Clark National Forest, from the District Ranger Kathy Bushnell. The Forest Service invites you to comment on our Middleman Project. There is a website here if anybody wants it. This is likely to begin spring of 2021, so about a year from now. Public comment is open until February 21st. There will be a, two public meetings, January 29th from 5:00 to 7:00 at Tri-Lakeside Fire Station 2, and January 30th from 7:00 to 9:00 at the Don Zimmerman Eldorado Heights Station 3. Again, if anybody wants to, any more of that information, we're happy to share with you. We do have a payment that was received of $839.09. We have a Wastewater Digest magazine, if anybody cares to read and digest that. And we have a letter from the Citizens Action Group for the Silos Recreation Area. Dear Broadwater County Commissioners, the Citizens Action Group for the Silos Recreation Area would like to take this opportunity to thank you for your leadership and generous support in approving the continued contributions of the Broadwater County Trust Board and the City-County Parks and Recreation Boards towards giving the full $90,000 raise to complete the master plan for the Silos Recreation Area. Your support for and approval of these generous contributions of $32,000 and $2,500 respectively to this effort was huge in helping meet our required match. It was also very helpful in showing support and helping other contributors step forward as we eventually achieved our goal of having the $45,000 available to match the BOR contribution of $45,000. With all the funding secured by early September, the request for proposals was prepared and finalized with you in late November. The RFP was advertised with bids received by December 27. Three bids were received and evaluated, and you selected Robert Petchen Association and Associates to complete the master plan. We expect they will be keeping us all informed and involved in the project over the next 12 months. We look forward to working with you and your contractor to help identify a great plan for future developments at the Silos Recreation Area. We ask that you keep us informed and involved in the great effort. And any of the members, if any of the members with the Citizens Action Group for the Silos Recreation Area can provide you with any information, please contact us. Again, thank you for your support in helping improve our Broadwater community. So, thank you very much, and they did a tremendous amount of work. And we have our kickoff meeting tomorrow at 10 o'clock. That is all the mail, almost at 10:30. We do have Bernadette here, and our agenda does say issues and times are subject to change. So Bernadette Swenson with Shawbor Surveying requests to lay egg exempt status. And Bernadette, if you want to stand at the podium or sit at the table, we can do either one.
Some new information, just to share with you on this riser request. And I'm not sure how, who will view this, but if you look at the final certificate of survey, the boundary location from seven parcels into five, I, you know, whether this was right or wrong when this was filed, nowhere on here does it state that Track B is an agricultural tract. It references the original 25-acre agricultural tract, also the one-acre agricultural tract. But nowhere on this certificate of survey does it reference the new Track B of 29.77 acres as an agricultural tract.
Which one are you looking at, Bernadette?
The very final one, Book 1, page 752.
Hey Nicole, would you come and join us? I may bring my books to the conference.
Yes. Oh, no problem. So I don't know if that changes the game.
You're saying which two have egg exempt attached to them in writing? Does it A or B?
No, well, the previous surveys, but if you look at this one, Track B, which is the one we're questioning for the risers of 29.77 acres, nowhere on the certificate of survey does it reference that as an agricultural tract. There's no claim of agricultural covenants on the certificate of survey.
If you look at that diagram, it's written right under in two places, agricultural tract.
Exactly. But those are referencing previous surveys. Now, I'm not saying this is correct, but I'm just saying that through the whole line of this, there was a lot of discrepancies. But this final certificate of survey does not claim that Track B is an agricultural tract. Now, where those agricultural tracts went, I mean, they're actually a portion of, you know, they were all conglomerated, irrigated, and so was the mortgage tract for occasional sale, however that one was.
Break at the 25.23.
That is the previous survey number. It's that one there. Book 1, page 426, created the one-acre potato farm.
So we're looking at 25.23, one acre.
Yeah, this certificate of survey.
So this does not have the agricultural, where it says Owen.
Right.
It's not identified as a parcel, but it does not have an agricultural exemption in place.
No.
So that would have been the 3.54 acres. This Owen piece.
Yes, that was certificate of survey number 1386. It's back a couple pages, one page.
Just in the acre, it doesn't add up. 2.942.
Well, that's because part of this parcel went to Track A. I know, there's so many maps. See, the rest of this went to Track A. So that's what I mean, they took seven different parcels and just created five.
Now that this is all one parcel, I don't know how you make that distinction between this egg tract, this egg tract, and now this, because the egg exemption always stays with the parent tract. So now, this Owen piece, I don't know how it's identified on here, but the piece for Owen that had the Owen request with the mortgage tract.
And the boundary location.
And then a boundary location with A, and then they did an aggregation with this, and now is this the parent tract that encumbers this with the agricultural tract?
Or does this absorb everything? I mean, I agree, this is a historical mess, or, you know.
Right.
But I guess my suggestion, or if it's possible to just take the latest, greatest, it's similar if a mortgage tract is sold. You can't go back and, you know, make them do a subdivision because their parcel was created incorrectly, or an error. And the landowner that did this, the surveyor that did this- And the landowner that did this, the surveyor that did this, they're all deceased. And so who do you go back, you know, to to correct this? So I guess I'm asking if we can just take the latest, greatest and move forward.
I'm just not sure how you say, well, only 25.23 acres is an egg tract, not the remaining 4.22.
Right, see, I think they're just referencing, they're referencing the previous surveys. Just like here, Parcel 1, and that wasn't a true parcel. Parcel 2, which wasn't a parcel. So, I mean, they're referencing all the past items, and then just saying we have seven, and now we want all the lines to be like this. Because they don't even have a lot of these marked as old boundaries and new. I mean, well, they have nothing marked, old boundary, new boundary, which is a requirement also.
We don't need to make a decision today. We could actually take this new information to Tara and see if there is a way. I think we're all trying to find a way to make this work. So that would be something we can think about.
I was checking, I found I emailed Tara earlier today just to ask her, not on this specific bit, on where, where do we go from there? She didn't respond to it, so.
Okay.
The only other things I could think of is to, MCA does allow the lift of an agricultural covenant if you go back to the original lines. So I didn't know if that could be worked to where we reestablish the house parcel and have the remainder be the agricultural tract, which is all the field.
Okay.
And that was new in MCA this year.
Wouldn't you create the egg tract and make the home the remainder?
Yeah, you could do that too. I mean, but it'd be just reestablishing the lines of, it's actually for lifting an agricultural tract, you can go back to the previous lines, but I don't know if it could be used to do the reverse to, okay, this was done in error, so let's reestablish the agricultural tract and the house tract separate from each other. This survey would be amended so they aggregated seven to six instead of seven to five. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
And then the only other thing I could think of was to, for the landowners to get a court order.
Right, yeah.
I just want to see this go, you know, into litigation of some sort or anything. So I'm just trying to think of an easy, quick way to.
So you're talking about the changes that were in House Bill 124, right? That were just made.
Yeah.
So the choices are that either goes to subdivision review, which we're trying to avoid. And the statute gives us two situations where county commissioners can lift the agricultural covenant. The one is the original lot lines are restored to aggregation of the covenanted tract prior to or in conjunction with the lifting of the agricultural covenant. And that's what you're trying to do.
Right.
It's an aggregation, would you read that again?
Says the original lot lines are restored to aggregation of the coveted tract prior to or in conjunction with lifting of the agricultural covenant.
Kind of around about.
So that's an aggregation, and we're trying to create new parcels. Not create new, go back to old.
Right.
So it's not aggregating. I can't have anyone read here and see how that.
Here's the MCA number.
Yes, I got a copy of it here too. Whoa, 763211.
Thank you.
No, I know. So what the MCA code did was take it out of 763207, that any change of land use subject to Chapter 506. They removed that and added the 211, 763211. In the new regulations.
Original lot lines upstate aggregation.
I think what it's intended, like if you created, if you had a 20-acre parcel and created a 10-acre agricultural exemption, if you re-aggregated it back into a 20, then the aggregation for the agricultural was away.
I'm just not sure how that would apply
I know.
to this situation. Because you're not aggregating anything, you're doing the opposite of aggregating. You're recreating. Prior to or in conjunction. Prior to, we're getting the covenant.
But again, I think the easiest thing is if we can just go by the latest, greatest certificate of survey, because otherwise, you know, what do you do with tracks D and C that weren't true parcels either, and track E? They were just parts of a remainder from a subdivision that were called out as three separate parcels, which they weren't.
I'm not an attorney, I just don't see how A, how 763211A would apply to this situation. I can't, I can't make it work.
I guess the other part of this equation too is it being taxed now as an agricultural now?
I would have to ask the landowner, but I doubt it since it's their home site.
They probably have non-qual egg, being that they're greater than 28 acres. Farm, farmstead. It's not a real farm. Yeah, I guess I would really like to see them not have to go through subdivision. I just don't know how to make that happen.
So would you make all the landowners out there see D? Any decree their parcels?
Well, these have, these all have recorded deeds, each of them. The only difference I'm finding here is this is called out as an agricultural tract. And MCA explains what an agricultural covenant is to be used for. Mortgage tract, mortgage tract, sorry. I don't know in MCA where, I mean, yes, it's to be used as a mortgage, but we've had evidence in the past where a mortgage tract is actually turned into a tract and sold. Don't know where in MCA it negates the use of that. I'm not saying it's not there, I just don't know where it is. With this having agricultural tract on it, this telling us how we have to review an agricultural tract, that's where, that's where I'm stuck.
Right, but Track B isn't labeled as an agricultural tract. It references past agricultural tracts. Now, there is a possibility too, I don't know, but during this time period, to lift an agricultural tract, you just came to the commission and asked. I don't know if the surveyor or landowner did that back in '01. I have no idea, and I haven't searched those records.
So if they did, then that would answer this, wouldn't it?
Right, because then it would be lifted, it would be gone.
Yeah.
If there was anything in, I would say commissioner minutes, that would be the most likely place for documentation of the commission granting the lifting of this agricultural covenant. My concern with doing that, I mean, not with that part of it, but with the commissioners, you know, looking at this as agricultural tract, they're not written on there. A good example is Offutt Carroll Drive. Those parcels down there, they purchased family transfer parcels. And on the survey, the most recent survey that's recorded, it just didn't call them out as agricultural tracts. You had to dig back through the record to find where they were agricultural tracts and then family transferred. But that didn't negate the fact that the agricultural covenant was still in place, that you just had to dig for it. So the people that purchased those lots didn't realize they were buying with agricultural covenant in place. They had to go through the subdivision process to lift that. So the fact that that's been done before makes me, makes me want to lean more towards them having to go through the subdivision process. However, with that being said, I don't know where your authority is to go to these folks that are living there. And if they're not changing these boundaries for you to say, I'm sorry, I know you're not, you know, you're not expecting this, but you have to go through the subdivision process to continue living on your home. That was a question I posed to Tara. What are the next steps for this commission? Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Are you talking about the, these?
Track B only.
Only Track B, okay. Yeah, I would like an answer to that question. For starters, I still have a lot of questions on this, and I will be honest with you. The reason is, is because I want to find a way to make this happen.
I would prefer, even, even though, you know, in my department, it's, you know, planning, it's responsible land use. I don't think that these folks are going to be creating any additional or negative impact on the community. Nothing's changing for them to force them to go through subdivision review. I don't like it, I don't want to do it. I would prefer any way that we possibly can to not make that happen. They, you know, they're not creating new parcels, there's no additional homes, in fact, some roads, public health and safety. It just doesn't seem fair. But like I've said before, that sometimes common sense or fairness in the law, you have to just follow the law. And I know that that's where Tara's coming from, and thus her recommendation of subdivision only. But I feel that this warrants further discussion.
Could we ask that you research those records, if there's something that we can use, great.
Well, definitely, research it.
And then, yeah, I guess I have, just kind of formulating in my head some follow-up questions for Tara.
Okay.
If nothing else, you know, maybe there's another road we just haven't thought of that complies with MCA, also lets us impose common sense and human caring into this whole thing. So you guys good with another, will that be two weeks?
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you for your consideration.
Absolutely, thanks for coming back. Yeah. We're gonna do everything we can.
Thank you. And if any of you think of any additional questions, if you have any additional questions or thoughts, I might actually just scan this whole thing in and email her this, as opposed to mailing it just. I mean, I know we still have two weeks before you meet again, but to give her time to process, I'm hopeful that there's case law out there, that she'll be able to pull in anything to say, no, this is fine, they can, they can move forward without subdivision. Because, you know, the, her response was, nope, subdivision, that's it, that's their only option. I don't mean to keep poking at her on this, but there's gotta be something else. I feel there's gotta be something else.
And if she sees this, this convoluted history.
She might be able to.
Yeah. All right.
I have one other question.
Yeah.
In, I think, I don't remember the exact date, but there is a resolution that any agricultural tract before 1993 can be lifted by the commission with sanitation improvement.
Oh, can we include that in our packet?
Yes, I had a copy of it. So I'm just wondering if, you know, if that's the case, what does it do to that resolution?
If the resolution is contrary to law, we'll have to, I don't know if there has to be a formal process, that would be a new question, but a resolution by this commission cannot override law.
And I know when the commission did this at the time, because this, this kept popping up.
Right.
This exact situation, agricultural tracts were being created. And then they kept having to come through here for subdivision review, when really that was not the intent of what they were being created for, they were not being created for evasion. Yeah, so I know when you signed that resolution, you really were looking out for the people.
Yeah, and it's because of procedural changes over time.
Right, exactly.
And that's what I keep going back to, it's like holding the past accountable to the present.
Absolutely.
Is really hard, that, you know, Nicole and I have talked about this. In 50 years, what are we doing that is going to be questioned? You know, because procedural change or understanding, interpretation of certain laws. Because I know for, well, it was early 2000s before the county required a subdivision for agricultural tracts because of the interpretation of the law.
Yeah.
And so as case law comes and changes things, then procedures and laws change accordingly, the understandings of the law. So it's really hard to go backwards.
Yeah. Would you hold off emailing Tara for other questions? Because I think if we have anything, we should put it all into one email
Absolutely.
rather than sending several. And then it'd be nice if she could get that coinciding with getting this, so that she has everything in front of her and can review that and understand where we're coming from.
Yeah, certainly. I'll just wait until the end of the day.
Okay.
Is that, or do you want more time than that?
How about tomorrow morning? Because we have a 4:00, I'm not sure if we have much time.
That's right, okay.
All right. Yes.
To say things.
Yeah, if you want, would you please step up to the podium and then just state your name for the record?
I'm Diane Holberg, and I'm a friend of the risers. And I've been friends with them forever, not ever, but probably the last 20 years. Michelle and I were very close, and we are still today. We were real estate agents together, we had our own company. And I just want to give a little bit of a human side to this story, because it's as much tragic, it's really amazing. Pat and Michelle and Pat's parents moved over here from Gateway, and they had been on that land pretty much all of Pat's family's life. And they sold and moved over here, and they were so happy. And their kids went to school here, and Michelle is as involved in community as anybody you've ever met. She fundraised for everything she could and made a lot of money for 4H, the rodeo team here. And then the work that she's done in Bozeman, she's raised probably over hundreds of thousands of dollars for nonprofit groups. And in 2011, had a cerebral hemorrhage and a stroke. And that changed their lives and mine forever. And instead of putting her in home, they have taken care of her. She needs 24-hour care. And the kids are here taking care of her. Tom goes back and forth to the Bakken, and Lauren is here taking care of mom. And the beautiful thing is now Pat is working for Elkes. And they've given him a job where he can go and do the work that he loves for cattle, but then also take care of Michelle. And it's neighbors helping neighbors. This land isn't going to look any different. It will just be Elkes. It will just be Elkes, it won't be used for anything different. And Pat's parents will be able to live their last days on that corner of the land. And it would really be a beautiful thing if we can make this happen, because it's really just been a great transition to a really bad situation. They don't get any public assistance. They take care of themselves. And it would just really be a nice thing if we could figure it out. But I appreciate you taking the time and consideration on it. And thank you for letting me say that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
That's why we've been trying so hard to work this out.
And I think we all agree, if we could just say, okay, it's fine. Go ahead and let that happen. That would, I think that's what we all want. I guess I'm not speaking for the commission, but maybe I am.
You are.
That's what we want. How do we do that legally is the difficulty for all of us, because you always have to look at the human side of it, no matter the situation. And it's difficult. It's very difficult. It's a difficult position that you have to be the ones to make that decision. It's my job to provide you with the tools to make the appropriate decision according to the law. And so that's, I think, why we need to take more time, because I feel there's gotta be a solution out there that will be legal and beneficial to the people.
I agree. Yeah, and this is a standalone situation.
It's not, it really is.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I've been surveying 26 years, I've never seen this.
And it's hard, but you really, really want to make something happen. But there's consequences for every action. You are, of course, are the ones that are going to be the ones upholding the law and dealing with those consequences. Yeah, and Bernadette and I will do our best to get the best answer, yeah.
Yeah, and we'll have follow-up comments for you, for Tara, for tomorrow morning at the latest.
Okay.
All right. And then our next meeting is two weeks from today, or no.
Two weeks and a day.
Two weeks and two days, because we have a conflict on Tuesday. So it'll be that Wednesday after the holiday.
Okay.
Yeah. Thanks, you guys. Bernadette, thanks for all the work on this.
Oh, no problem.
You've put in a lot of time.
Just trying to get it worked out and figured out.
Yeah.
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we have David Payne and Shannon Shanholzer with Montana Association of County's Claims and property claimers. Good morning. Would you guys join us at the table? And if you want to just use the front row too, that's fine. And Mike and Michelle, would you mind joining us, please? Mike Myers in the back there. Michelle, you can probably stay where you're at. And then Mike, if you'd just come up either to the table or the front row. Thanks for coming down and joining us. So I guess we have some questions. We talked with Julie last week about the claims that we received for some roofs that we didn't see that there was damage to and want to know. What can we do? What should we do? How does this work? What are the questions that you guys have? Or do you want to just pop in as we go?
Yeah, just as we go.
All right. So I think you've been hearing from Mike. What can you guys educate us on?
I talked to Mike, as I understand your concerns, there was questions whether there was damage up there or if it had been actually inspected, is that?
Yeah.
Okay. There is, you've got 40 some odd locations insured. There was 13 of them were identified as having hail. I assume that came from the county, because these, the two guys, there were two guys from Travelers out here, Joe Purdue is a National General adjuster, and a guy named John Lively, who's an estimator. They were on every roof. They provided me with over 260 photographs of the locations. There's detailed estimates on each location. There's significant evidence of hail damage, there's no question. There's large spread, widespread damage that hit Broadwater County. The county has nothing to do with the school system. The school, Travelers insured the school. The loss to the school was well over $1 million just for the school alone. There was significant weather event that hit this area. It also affected five other counties in Montana, because we have along with Broadwater County, we've got Madison County, Mineral County, Giverhead County, and then the education district. So Broadwater is in, that claim is in with five other locations. All told were probably $1.3 million in that hail claim, which Broadwater Counties is a small chunk of that. The estimates that you received is actual cost value. Whether or not you elect to repair all of the pieces of property, totally honest with you, I don't know that you need some of the buildings. I don't know that I would get into tearing that stuff apart. One of them was, the damage was significant, I believe, because the search and rescue law. It is obvious, you can see the damage from the ground, the ground photograph. The other ones, I think that over time, something could develop. Travelers policy with respect to damage assessment, there's a number of different ways you can do it. As insurers, our obligation is to make a calculation of the damage to the property immediately after and ensure event as opposed to what it was before. So there's a number of different ways you can do that. Cost replacement is one of the easier ways to do it. Travelers policy is rather than argue with people over repair versus replacement, they Not all insurance carriers do that. That's Travelers' national policy, they do that. There's evidence of hail damage, they calculate the cost to replace it. Does that mean that it is absolutely positively necessary to replace everything? No, that's their policy, and it's the claim of that. So that's why some of those metal buildings, they have the cost of replacing the siding and replacing the roofing. Well, as a practical matter, it probably isn't necessary. The other thing is some of those buildings have previous damage, either from vehicle damage on some of them, wear and tear on others. The problem that you run into when you have normal wear on a roof is hail does come and it will damage that. So somebody would say, well, but the damage is due to wear and tear, it just takes the hail. You can't do that. You have to replace it. So as far as what the county should do, I would say replace the ones that are subject to continued wear, the shankled roofs. The metal ones, you can decide, put the money into some kind of a fund to address these that come up later, would be an idea. The problem with doing nothing is travelers may not always be the excess insurance carrier. The next carrier comes in, and if you have another event, you right off the bat, you have a dispute as to old versus new. Because right, wrong, or indifferent, August 10th of 2019 is going to be a date when there was a hailstorm. So if another carrier comes in, takes a look at that, they're going, well, this may not be ours. And there's evidence of a dispute right there. So I would fix, I would recommend you fix whatever you can fix. And then, you know, the chances of a metal building getting damaged further is pretty remote. So any other questions? Any of this?
I guess the one question I have is, say we do decide to repair our roofs and that this money that we have doesn't cover that cost, where are we at there?
Well, you've got replacement costs down there, so the part that you've been paid is replacement value, is actual cash value that's depreciated. If you do absolutely nothing, that's what you get. If you get into replacing these things, and some of the bigger ones, I think the state law is $80,000 you gotta put up for bid, and you're probably more familiar with that. So this will probably have to go out to bid with some of the bigger buildings, including the one that we're in. Until the work is done, an estimate is exactly that, including the claim estimate. So before it started, or all these, if you elect to replace, if they all go exactly to the dime of what the insurance calculation is down, that would be a first. It really happens. But replacement cost is exactly that. So until you replace it, the carrier's obligation is ACV, that's what you've got. If you do elect to replace it, what I would suggest is once you get a bid from the contractors, if you get significant difference, let us know. As long as that's done within a reasonable time, reasonable is always kind of a nebulous term, but I mean, if you do, if you waited 10 years, Travelers probably wouldn't have honored to put the price increase. If you get right after it, and there is a difference in the value, see how they need to go back and readjust it. But when all shakes out, you should only have to pay your deductible.
It should be, it does need to be part of the damage from the hail. You can't open up and find termites and say, okay, we want to pay for this.
Right, yeah.
So it would have to be directly within the zone. And just kind of a little, I guess, fundamental part of insurance. You have buildings and your property insured, and the insurer's responsibility is to make you whole again. So you put a building on the schedule for this amount of dollars, and that's what it's worth, and you insure it, your premium is calculated on that. And then in the event of a loss, the insurance carrier's responsibility is to make you whole again, because you were paying for that coverage. So that's what it is there. You know, as David said, there are some that you may not feel that's necessary, but if we had another hailstorm in three months that goes and hits one of these buildings that you didn't repair, then there would maybe be some issues there with the adjusting, since you didn't go through with the repairs.
So, see, my issue is, we went and looked at the roofs, particularly the fairground roofs. That area didn't get hit with the hailstorm. And there's not damage there. And it's the same thing with the buildings down at the county shop. The vehicles may have got hit, but that's a completely different type of metal. And the metal that's on those buildings doesn't have a dent in it. There's no issue with them. So we're gonna end up spending however X amount of dollars on a roof that has no reason to be replaced. And if we don't replace it, and the next guy comes and says, well, you had a hailstorm in 2019, and you never replaced it, and we have a report of damage, there was no damage.
So you're talking about the roping barn?
The roping barn, the weed shed, the 4H building at the fairgrounds, and the commercial building.
There is photographs, I have photographs of the roping barn, and there is damage to it. So, I mean, the point of our coming here was not to debate over damage. First of all, I haven't seen it. Personally, I haven't seen it. I'm relying on photographs. But the roping barn, yeah, I mean, you pointed out dents on that. That's an example of one, okay, do you really want to replace it? I mean, I wouldn't. It's a metal roof. Metal roofs, we get hail in Montana a lot. It takes big hail to dent a roof, a metal roof like that. And what happens with the damage on that is they have rivets with urethane bushings around them. Sometimes the hailstones hit that divot or that rivet that holds it on, and it can leak there. And to fix that is to go to either caulk each one of those rivets or to replace it. Metal roofs can be kind of problematic, especially if it has severe hail on it. But to be honest with you, I did see, he circled areas where there's dents in there. It is what we used to call an appearance allowance, appearance loss. And again, Travelers' policy is they're not gonna get into arguments over appearance. They just say, okay, it's got dent, here it is. And then if you elect to do it, fine, if not, keep the ACV. That is, that's essentially the loss to the building. So that would be one to where I would question the wisdom of taking that metal off and replacing it unless it's leaking.
So what's the consequence down the road if you don't do that, though?
Well, I would look at what's the odds of it getting repaired, of getting absolutely, I mean, if it burns down, that's different, but it's, takes a huge hailstorm. Again, how old is the building?
19, late 70s.
Okay.
79.
That's the $64 question. I mean, I don't know the damage. If you do, you have the money to address it, if you do have to fix it, because that's always there. At least the ACV's always there. But it's, it is a judgment call to make. But say there's absolutely no damage, no, there is, it's there, they found it.
And I guess the other part of that too, is if you take that money and stick it into a fund, and then you don't use it, and then all of a sudden you have an event, say 10 years down the road, you don't have enough money to fix it. Because the price of steel in 10 years is gonna be 10 times more than what it is right now.
That's the reason why insurance carriers are usually in systems that you fix. No, they're not gonna be responsible for that, nor will the new carriers. But it is a decision that you're gonna have to make. And you would be in the same boat if you did nothing. And the debate is solely gonna be on, is there damage, yes or no? Traveler says there is, and they have evidence that there is.
And they paid you for it.
And they paid. So some of these decisions aren't easy decisions, but doing nothing is not gonna get you to where you're going to want to be either, is my point.
What you're saying, though, is we could elect to fix rather than replace, and then keep that money in a fund for further fixes that might come up in the future.
Yeah. Yeah, that'd be one thing you could do, but...
And it would be beneficial to just document what repairs you did do to the area, and even letting us know so that it would get attached to that building on the schedule. And then that way, in the future, if there is some kind of a discrepancy with another hailstorm or, you know, with a different carrier, then we can go back and say, well, they gave us documentation that they did the repairs here. So kind of to cover you, as far as that part goes, for coverage in the future.
Absolutely. Could you share with us the pictures that you have, so that our maintenance staff knows?
Yeah. I have one on thumb drive, and being the untechie person that I am, I didn't want to be messing with a computer, recognize we only had half an hour of time. But I can get, yeah, I can give you all, I can get the thumb drive copy and have them all.
It was quite the file, it was not something that was emailable, because there were so many photos.
That makes sense.
We'll figure it out.
And you already have the estimates, I believe.
I believe we do, right?
Yeah. And you can see what they, with the photographs, they took photographs of everything, including other non-related damage from vehicles and wear and tear and whatnot.
Yeah, that could be really beneficial.
Yeah.
And I do think that it's important to note that on the property side of things, you're within this pool, I'm not saying this is how it works out in the commercial world, but within the pool of the counties, we do not underwrite for the property experience. So you don't have an experience rating on your property losses. We know you can't control those hailstorms anyway. You know, it's not like, on the liability side, there is an indication for experience rating. You know, if you have, you know, lawsuit after lawsuit after lawsuit, you know, those are the things that start to affect your premium. But this won't. That's not saying that there's not going to be an increase for the entire pool. I mean, that's happening on a national level regardless with property rates. So we will only rate, and one of the more important things to note in being in the pool is that we're nonprofit. It's just the county's money pooling their money together to cover the claims. There is no profit margin. There is not, we need to increase the prices because we need to make more money. You know, there isn't that factor at all, so.
That's one of the beauties of being in the pool, is because you wouldn't get penalized for having a storm like this. Broadwater County doesn't have any control over that. The fact that you're in it with other peoples, we had it pooled together that way, so there, because we retain, as a trust, we retain $250,000 of the loss, so we only wanted to pay that retention one time. So it was one occurrence spread over a number of different ways, just for the benefit of the pool, so. the pool, so. But the reality of the market with reinsurance or excess is had not one hailstone fallen in Montana last year. We still would probably be faced with increasing rates, just by the nature of the reinsurance and excess market. And that's just, that would have existed whether you pooled or not. But again, the beauty of being in a pool is so you don't get rated, or your, your rates, the pool will, the trust is the one that pays the premium, you're a member of it, so there isn't gonna be an, there's a calculation of the property, of the property loss for Broadwater County.
Okay.
And this isn't something we run into very often. Usually people want more money, they're, they don't wanna, don't give us so much money.
This is a man bites dog situation, and it's probably the first time I've had anybody complain that they've been paid too much.
So do you guys have any further questions? Mike, do you? Michelle, from the finance standpoint?
No, I think the only thing was, if we put that money into a CIP, then we just have to make sure that the only thing that is used for is for the stated damage that, what it was for, so like for the roof. It can't be used for anything else related to the building, only what was, so like, it was roof replacement, that's the only thing the money can be used for, period.
I'm not sure how detailed that would need to be. I'm not aware of all the laws, but I would think that you would need to at least have it into a building maintenance fund of some sort, for those reasons. But don't quote me, I'm not an attorney.
Well, that's good, that's gonna be your county's decision.
Sure. Yeah. And it would probably be a wise decision on our part, we can address that. But yeah, I think that's good advice, so thank you.
And one of the other parts of the pool, which is different than a lot of commercial carriers, is you are given choices, three choices for each building that you have. You are, you can put it on the schedule at replacement value, or you can, if it appraises for a million dollars, then that's what you have to pay the premium on for replacement value. But you can choose to insure it for a lower stated value, $500,000. In the event of a total loss, you're only gonna get paid $500,000. And the other option is no coverage. You don't have to cover everything for physical damage, just so you are aware of the, the risk that you're taking. If there is a complete loss, then you're not getting paid anything. So the trustees did last year vote to fund and provide another round of appraisals. So those will be starting this spring. The state is split into three sections, so this area may not get hit till, or appraised till the second year, but this could cause some issues with appraisals as well. So if you, if there are significant damage, at least having your decisions made on what you're going to do with the, the repair and these types of things, so. So you wanna make sure you have adequate insurance coverage on the base. But we do have, you know, some counties, one county had a historic building that wasn't really, wasn't on the register or anything like that, but it was, to replace that building would have cost $1.3 million. They were using it as a storage building. So if it did burn down, they weren't willing to replace it with the brick and mortar and everything, you know, at the $1.3 million. So they chose to insure it for $300,000. So you do have those options as well.
Yeah, what else?
Yeah, yeah.
Anything from there?
All right. So please let us know if you have any additional questions. We can help you out.
Thank you for coming down, we appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks.
Thanks, Julie, thanks. Michelle, Mike, thanks for coming. Hey, we're right on time. County website decision, meeting room and annex furniture. I'm gonna toss this one to you, Daryl.
Well...
That's all right.
Yes, okay. We've been working on this for quite a while, and I think we're, we're probably make some decisions. I guess maybe the first one we'll jump into is, and I think you guys got copies of the quotes for a, a new commissioner's desk, right? And one of the quotes was from the Montana Correctional Enterprises, and the other was from the local contractor here, Cadillac Custom Cabinets. The one from the local contractor was $4,200, and the one from the Montana Correctional And that was for the 36-inch width, is what we were talking about. So with that, and you guys remember the, you guys got copies of these, right?
Yes.
And then, oh, additionally, there was also a, a new...
Podium?
Podium, in, in that price as well. I, I do believe, and that was, I have to make a correction, the, the cost on the, from the local contractor for the cabinet and the pedestal, or the podium, was $4,200. $2,093 from the Montana Correctional Enterprises for the desk, and, where was it? Oh, $274 for a podium.
And that's from the OC?
Yes. And these are the renderings, if you guys have any of these, coffee styles, and our the pedestal for the podium. So I guess, with that, any questions on, on that?
Not for me?
No?
No.
So who wanted to decide?
Both would include seating for four.
Yes.
And, yeah, I think with what we talked about with Mike, what they propose is absolutely will both work.
Okay, all right. So we wanna go with the Montana Correctional Enterprises quote? Does that say we're quite a bit less expensive?
Yes.
Okay, you want me to make a motion?
That'd be great.
Okay. I will move that we go with Montana Correctional Enterprises for the amount of $2,093 for a new commissioner's desk, and also the amount of $274 for a podium.
I'll second the motion.
And moved and seconded to purchase the proposal from the Department of Corrections for a commissioner's desk, the price of $2,093, and a podium, $274. Is there any public comment? Cory, please state your name for the record, because people can't see who you are.
My name is Cory Swanson, county attorney. I guess, I just wanna bring back to your attention, we, last year had a proposal from Val Orangefield, clerk of court, for some updating of some very outdated furniture in the courtroom, and Val did a lot of work on that, and it was a very reasonable amount of money, and the commission didn't pass it, said you need to go back to the state surplus warehouse in Helena first and try that. So I guess I'm, number one, I feel like we're kind of having a different treatment here for what I think are very legitimate needs, and, you know, all the district court judges have also remarked that they'd like to see an update in the courtroom. And secondly, ask if you guys went to the state warehouse for surplus first before you decided to purchase this.
Well, no, we've checked, as a matter of fact, that podium right there, Cory, came from state surplus property, so. And, and as far as for things like this, they only come along when, once in a while. Kind of have to be there to take advantage of it. So right now, I don't, I'm not aware of anything. Not saying that that's something, couldn't show up in the future, we just, we just simply don't know.
Shirley, please state your name.
Shirley Wilson. The present chairman of the commissioners relied very heavily on tradition to be elected to the seat that she now sits in. However, there was a letter to the editor in the paper that said, "This table was made by a local artisan for the commissioners." So if tradition exists in one part, why doesn't it exist in the other? I would like to see you keep the same table. It was made expressly, expressly for the commissioners.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Public comment? All right, I will call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Will you follow up on that, Daryl?
I will, I'll follow up.
All right. And as far as the courtroom, we just haven't got a report that I'm aware of from Val, from follow-up. So if you guys have seen that, let me know, and we can certainly work with her in the future as soon as we get that. And, and that would be from the service. So the website, are you ready for that, Daryl?
Well, I think we are. I guess, maybe going back to the, our room, you remember this diagram that we received on tables and chairs?
Yes.
You know, I know that Allison has expressed an interest in trying to use that building, and some other folks as well. So do we want to purchase some tables and chairs that they could use in there for training and for 4-H and things like that?
Yeah, I think it's, it's not a bad idea. Probably look at the, this will be for extension, so I would think at least a split. We talked about the plastic tables that are very inexpensive and easy to move, because that was an issue, was ease of moving. So, yeah, I, I would think if we could get a report from Allison, go ahead and forward.
Okay. I guess, yeah, we don't really know how many we think we would need.
Right.
Mike and I talked about some different ways to store those tables over there. He's got some ideas on that, that would make it a lot easier for Allison, or anybody else to have access to those tables, so they're not hauling them everywhere and have to put them up, so I guess, I think there's some good ideas there. So Allison, I guess you wanna kind of give us an idea of how many you think that you would need for some of the work that you do, and we can make a decision about what we wanna do.
Sure. I mean, this is the first time I've heard of it coming out of my budget.
Hey, Allison, if you would, why don't we have you come to the table and sit with us, and we can get into this and that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, so this is the first time I've heard of it coming out of my budget, which is gonna make a huge difference, because I really don't have much of a budget for extra, things like that. Originally, we kind of talked about it, and thought maybe there would be a little wiggle room with the building for some meeting room equipment. And so, I mean, if you're talking about it coming out of my budget, I mean, I'm only gonna probably only buy a couple chairs and a couple tables, which...
But I think it's a split, so we wouldn't be looking at you and for everything. But I do think if it's for extension and 4-H specifically, that there should be some skin in the game, some buy-in.
Sure, and I, I definitely, I understand that. I also do see a lot of other people using it, just like we did over in the ambulance building. And in the ambulance building, we actually received some donations of chairs, which we since donated to someone else, and I'm wishing we hadn't, if I would've known, we would've had to spend some more. Now I'm not gonna ask for my donation back, certainly, because we did, like I said, donate that to another group in the community. So yeah, I mean, I guess I can look into that. I mean, I can tell you right now, I'm not budgeting for this, because I do not budget for any of that.
You know, I know that we, we kind of have, when we took out that loan, we had some money for, for some of these things that we thought we'd do for remodeling and stuff like that. I, I mean, I think we could actually use some of that, rather than taking that money out of Allison's budget, you know? I don't think it's gonna be a whole lot.
I wouldn't think so either. No, but I do think equity, what you do for one, you do for all. So whenever there is a office that wants new furniture, we have them buy it. So we can certainly find some extras, I think we can go pretty reasonable, but I just think we should have skin in the game from all departments. Certainly, you can use the, the loan for some of that, although the loan is stated specifically it's for renovations, not for furniture. So we'll have to make sure that's okay within our cap.
So then can I ask, if other departments use the meeting room, are they gonna pay to use that facility?
Well, they did with the ambulance building.
Not the county, just the outside groups.
Right. So that would be something that we would be looking at, but I guess with equity, I would like to have maybe a working meeting on this. This was kind of sprung, I didn't know we'd be talking about this, we haven't worked with you. So maybe if we could have a working meeting and work out some of those details, we share and share alike, for sure, but when we ask other departments to do A, we should be having all departments do A. So, you know, those are things we need to work through, but I'm, I'm, every department needs to be involved. So I don't, I just am not into doing something different for one. Again, resting on the fact that I've been a staunch supporter of 4-H from day one and before. I've been a staunch supporter of your department. This is just trying to be equitable. So let's have a working meeting. If you could do some of the homework, though, because we don't have a clue how many tables you think we, that you need, how many chairs? So if you could put that together, perhaps work with Mike on where it's going to be stored, and then come to us with a package, we can go ahead and work through all those other details.
And, and I think some of those are, and I know, you know, I know Daryl's already done a little bit of work, 'cause he has, and has a diagram that has tables and chairs in it. And so the reason why I have not done any is because, one, I was not asked to, and I, I'm fine doing some of that, 'cause I know that Daryl has already done some of that work, and has already been working on it. And I know he even shared it with all the commissioners at one point, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong. And, and then Mike and I were actually over this morning, and talked a little bit about storage as well.
Good, good.
I think we just need to know what you think your needs are, before we make any decision.
Sure. Yeah, we have talked about this diagram before, but we didn't, I didn't know that it had come from anything more than a shot in the dark. So if you could give us some specifics that we can work with, I think that would really help us to take that next step. So we'll go ahead and put that on the agenda in the next coming weeks, let us know when you're ready.
Okay.
All right. All right, thank you. Yeah, I didn't know we'd be talking about this either.
Well, I just assumed it said, it said, what did it say? Annex furniture, so I just assumed that was furniture, so.
Sure, sure. And then the other thing would be the meeting chairs, too. I think surplus has some of those, but maybe we can get...
Yeah, and there's quite a few there now. Do you want to use the ones that are there now?
Yeah, I think they're pretty nice, yeah.
They're pretty big chairs, really. I think there's 12 or 13 chairs there.
Yeah.
You could probably get some more that would probably closely match it.
Yeah, and surplus has $1,500.
Right, exactly.
I think we could easily have some nice complimentary chairs that are kind of the same style.
That'd be fine.
All right. So website?
Well, you know, let me get my stuff out here. Our website, we had, if you guys remember, we had two different meetings. We invited all of our, our department heads and elected officials to attend one of the, one of the other. One was done at their own workstation, one we had a joint meeting where we all met in the courtroom, and I thought their presentations went pretty well. So I, after that, I asked for comments from everyone that attended, anyway, to give us a recommendation of who they thought would be our best website provider, and, like I, did I share that with you guys? Did I should give you that? Okay, it's, there's only actually two people that wrote back, and then the, the other ones here on the bottom are ones that I directly talked to. So maybe I'll let you look at that before I go any further. I saw that I sent that to you guys, but I didn't, I'm sorry.
Hang on just a second. Is this to comment on what your preference would be to that question that Daryl had asked?
I never got a chance. I, I picked up the email, and just never got a chance to respond. I did get to sit through it.
Okay.
But the presentations with everything else going on, but I know government, most government, I'm one of them, I just wanna throw my two cents in. I don't know how you guys, if you had talked to Brandon or not, they're, they're really... They're really good folks to work with. That's who does my webpage. I just, you know, I don't, like I said, I didn't get to sit through your presentation with them. I don't know what they provided you. But if there was any questions about it, if they're workable folks, they are very workable folks. Sometimes I gotta tone her out, Angie, I believe it is. She, every once in a while, she gets a little overburdened with the phone calls. But she's trying to create a good product. So if there was any questions about whether or not they were good to work with, I just wanted to say they were. That's all it was. So I guess I didn't get to sit through anything else, so.
Thank you.
Anyway, I guess you guys read to the comments and what everybody's choices were. I would say that everybody said that they felt Civics Plus was the vendor they felt would serve us the best. There was a comment from our county attorney, he said he could go either way, but maybe would do consider a middle-range option from government's most-wanted, or most-wanted government site. As far as for the numbers, how they break out, Civics Plus was $9,300 for their complete website package. And $2,250 annual cost would be to maintain that website and have a team to help us as we go along. They're based in Manhattan, Kansas. It's cloud-based, no servers required. There's unlimited pages. They do nightly off-site backups 24/7 and the RADA compliant. Along with Civics Plus, there was the option to do Civics Clerk, which is a meeting and agenda management system, and then also a media management system called CP Media. It's kind of expensive to do that whole package. If we wanted to add that on, that's another $11,000. And out of that, $888 of that would be website hosting, which allows video streaming of the meetings and then that they would be archived after that and they'd be available on demand for the public or anybody that wanted to watch them. There was an option, they said that we could not do the agenda meeting management system and just do CP Media. If we decided to do that, it would be $6,000. So, and the other option is to use YouTube like we presently are. And I did a follow-up question with Jordan from Civics Plus. He said that they would be happy to help us set up the YouTube and the software and the things that we needed to make that happen. So that's, that's an option for us as well, a lot less expensive option. Maybe something that we would consider at this point and see how we do with it. And then maybe someday down the road, we could consider the other options as well. Most Wanted Government Website, their initial base cost was $9,995. They did offer a less robust version for $5,090. Oh, and also, I forgot to mention on Civics Plus, they did offer us a payment plan, where we could, we could stretch those payments out over a period of four years. Yes, four years. And also, Most Wanted Government Website also offered that same plan, that we could stretch those payments out over a period of time as well. Government Most Wanted Annual Cost was normally $2,100. They discounted that to $1,995 for us. They're based in Mountain Home, Arkansas, provide 24/7 unlimited support. They only did offer 27, or 28 consecutive days of backup off-site, and they are ADA compliant as well. Their agenda and meeting management module, they do have one available. They did not give us a price on that. And, but as with both of them, there is limited meeting and agenda management, similar to what we're doing now with our, with our current website that Nicole does such a fantastic job on. So we would still be able to post agendas, all the documents that go with those meetings and things like that. The only difference would be, is that we can't timestamp them. So normally, if you have this software, you would timestamp. The video is a streaming, so that if you had a particular interest in one subject when you went to the on-demand portion, you could go straight to that. You would know exactly where it's at. You wouldn't have to watch the whole meeting. So that, that's kind of one of the advantages of that. Let's see. And then their video solution was, they did have a third-party vendor that could possibly be used, but also they suggested using the YouTube account as well, which we presently do. So.
Daryl, what was the first price, the more robust price for Most Wanted?
$9,995.
Thank you very much. All right. Mike, any thoughts?
No.
My only thought would be the Most Wanted has only 28 consecutive days backup. I think that's a big deal. We had two different court cases. One was against John Wright and we had the one with Joe Schmaus wanting videos. And court takes a lot longer than 28 days to put something together. You have to go back, and they've only backed up 28 days. I think that could be a problem for us. So for that reason, I would support the Civics Plus option because it does have the unlimited somewhere here.
Yeah.
Unlimited backup and nightly backups, which I think is important, too. What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, that, I think that does make a difference. I guess the thing, what they're backing up is, you know, they're backing up all the information on our website. I don't know if they're going to be necessarily backing up any of our video stuff. That's going to be if we choose to, if we choose the YouTube option. Now, if we did choose their video option, then yes, they would be, you know, then they would be doing that for us. But the YouTube would, would still be however the, however it works for YouTube.
And that's, they just keep...
I think they just keep piling up, don't they?
Right, yeah. Now they're quite a pile.
Yeah, and we do have a YouTube account for Bob Water County.
Yeah.
I actually went and looked at that and seen how everything's set up there. So that might be a, an option for us for a while, see how it works.
Gives us a chance to kind of step into this sort of phase into it versus all at once.
Yep.
All right. Any staff have any comments or input? Okay. Do you want to go ahead and proceed with a, oh, Cory, do you have comments?
Yeah, I'm not staff at all. Throw a comment. County Attorney Chris Watson, I visited with Commissioner Poford about this, and I think anything we do at this point is going to be kind of a quantum leap forward. So I don't know if we need the biggest, you know, most capable website because frankly, it's going to, we won't use probably a lot of those, a lot of those features. So I would say if you can find something that's middle ground, that meets the needs, honestly, I think the biggest customer is going to be the commission. You know, the sheriff's office has a, has a system and has a Facebook page. So how we integrate that, and how we integrate like my office or other offices into that, I think is still going to be a challenge. I would say if you get a middle-of-the-road one that's economical, that's probably going to more than meet our, meet our needs. And as far as the video, video of the meetings and the social media connection, the big thing I think the public would like to see is the ability to access documents online.
Thank you.
I can answer some of those. Cory, they do have social media interaction, both, both sites did. And as far as for sheriff, I asked a specific question of Civic Plus, if his site could be migrated into ours, and they said yes, for sure. So the advantage, I guess, for our sheriff's office is they would no longer have to support a video site on their own. That would be, if they chose to do that, it would...
I don't force bring videos.
And as far as for, you know, how the, how the site looks, I guess the way I see it happening for us is that we probably would have to form a committee with our, with our departments because it's going to take all that input as we start to build this and how they want their, their particular site to look, and the information they want to share with everybody and how it all works. So it's going to take some time. I think they said eight to 12 weeks is probably what it's going to take to get this up and going. And then we can make the changes as we go along. As far as for the content for each department or its website page, that's going to kind of be up to them to help to maintain that and keep it up to date. And surely, we'll have some folks that we'll designate that have specific, more, you know, more user rights than others to make those changes for us. Anyway, that's how I see it working.
All right. So if we had a vote today, you could contact whomever and get started with our weeks of building.
I could, yep.
Are you ready for that?
I am ready for that.
Or you guys, one more time?
I guess, yeah.
What's the, what's the length of the contract with these people? I mean, is this, if we spend this $9,300 and it's $27,500, is that something we can get out of like after three years or does it depend on the payment plan? Are we committed to them forever or how long?
Well, no, I, you know, I don't think we're committed to them forever. There's actually really no contract. I mean, it's just a matter of support. If for some reason we decided to change vendors, I guess we would do that, but... And I guess that's one thing that I look at going into the future, who's going to provide, you know, I think they both would provide a very good support and, and all that. I don't really see any difference between the two, but...
If when we do take the next step and we have a contract in front of us and there's something that we don't like, we can always negotiate that part of the contract or not work with that particular vendor because of that, but whatever it is.
I think that, you know, we, this was, actually, a lot of this information was on the website. It was posted, Nicole posted that on the website as far as for, it's not really a contract, it's just their proposal of what they would provide, their deliverables for, for the $9,300 or the $9,900, whichever it was we decided to spend. And I think that's probably what they'd be locked into. So yeah, if we, if we decide that we want to go ahead, I can definitely make the contact with these folks and get that ball rolling. But then I would ask for help from all of our departments in forming a committee and so that when we get, what they'll do is they'll send us the information and probably be a series of, I don't know what they'll be, if they'll be web-type things or on the phone, but they'll be coaching us through us how to, the information they need to build a site.
We can put together a memo so that people know, one, what the expectations are, what our requests are, what, how we expect that this will move going forward, and then take whoever's interested and, to be the kind of the people picking the pictures and colors and that type of thing.
Right, right.
So in order to move forward, we should have a vote for the record on which company we want to go with and show an approval of the commission to move forward.
You want to do it, Mike, don't be too... Okay, I guess it seems like the recommendation was to go with Civics Plus. So I would recommend that we go with Civics Plus as our website provider. And for initial cost of $9,300 and then an annual service cost of $2,250.
I'll second the motion.
Cory, it's been moved in second into contract with Civic Plus for a initial cost of $9,300 and an annual hosting cost of $2,250. Is there any public comment? Public comment? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries.
One thing that I do want to mention is that there'll probably be some additional costs down the road, which we'll, we'll come back before the commission as we, we do have to buy a, you know, a laptop to control the, the video streaming. And we have some cameras to install over there. We're fortunate that they're already wired for cameras and also it does have a speaker system in there. So we'll go forward with those recommendations that were made by some of our citizens to be able to hear better, which will require some microphones and some things like that. So we don't know what those costs are yet.
Sure.
But when we get those costs in, we'll bring that before the commission.
Sounds good. And some of those would fit with the remodel.
Yes.
Yeah.
They would. And I want to commend Mike Meyer, Building Man. He's done a great job in helping us put some of that stuff together, and he's going to be instrumental in installing some of that stuff, so. Thanks, Mike.
Nice to know. All right. Moving on, we have claims approval process, tilt allocation, pay off claim for Part Deets. And we have, Cory, if you want, what we'll do is kind of give an introduction first, and then we'll take public comment and input here in just a few minutes. So what we have is a claim, or pass that back to you. But there isn't enough money in the fund to cover the claim. So we have an email from the finance officer, and it says that she ran the numbers. The motion that would need to be made is for $25,414.44 to even out the balance for that fund and pay off the entire Part Deets account.
Was that 25,414, 44?
Correct. Yeah. And here is a spreadsheet with that amount. And with this, this will zero out that entire account. We can get you a copy of that, Cory? If you want to come and sit at the table with us, you can do that. So this would be in addition to the $100,000 that we gave to this account earlier in the year. So what we could do with this $25,000 then is get this bill paid off and then just this next year, July 1-ish, is put in $7,500. We have kind of a two-year waiting period minimum. So yeah, if you guys are interested in moving forward with that plan, you can go ahead and get that paid off.
Yeah, I think Part Deets has been very accommodating on this. If we could pay it off, I think that'd be a great, great thing to do personally.
I agree.
I would agree with that.
Right. So we just need a motion to proceed.
I have also thoughts before you do that.
Sure.
So the problem is that the funds are already available. So the, this is, and I went through all this when I submitted my budget memo, kind of seeing this, how this is going to play out. So at the end of the last budget, there was.
I, before you go any further, I think you might be working with some erroneous numbers. So there was talk during the budget season of adding an additional $17,000 or $19,000 into that fund. At one point, we were going to take from one source and then another, and then you had asked us to wait until you talked to Bob Denning. Well, the money got put in the fund accidentally. It was not authorized. So your fund is actually short $19,000. So the paperwork you have in front of you, you just need to subtract $19,000. That's what we're working through. So that's why our discussion today is for the $25,000. It's really just an additional $6,206, which is the amount remaining, plus the $19,000 that shows is in your account but was not authorized to be put in your account. So just to make sure we're all on the same understanding on that.
Okay, so right now, what it shows is that there, the $19,000, this is printed today. This is printed today.
Correct.
It shows that there's $19,000 that was put into the account from Pilt last year according to the budget. You're saying that wasn't authorized? Because you guys voted to approve that.
We did not.
I don't know about that.
It's nowhere in the minutes. So yeah, that is just an error. We're going to have to do a budget amendment. So we either do the budget amendment to add in the $25,000 or we do a budget amendment to subtract the 19. And that's based on today's vote. So if we don't do anything, we do have to have a budget amendment to subtract the $19,000 because there was no vote, no authorization for that. It was just an error. Nobody's fault, just simple human error. If we want to put that back in and we thought it would be wise to just go ahead and pay off Park Deets in full, then we need to have a motion today to take from Pilt $25,414.44 that pays off that bill in total. Does that make sense?
Well, it does, but I still don't agree. So there's, first of all, Beaverhead County contributed $5,000 and that was deposited, it looks like December 19th. So that was specifically for the Barris litigation. Okay, so that, part of what has happened, and it got deposited into general fund cash because that's where it's deposited apparently. I gave it to Doug and Debbie to work out where it gets deposited.
That's in statute. And then what it does is it bounces from there to this litigation fund.
Okay, that's fine. But I don't think that that $5,000 is transferred into the litigation fund.
It's irrelevant. It's still going to be in that fund. It's irrelevant to today's discussion. It does not include the 19 or the amount of the bill.
So I don't have any piece of paper that tells me on what you're saying. What is the actual amount in the Barris litigation fund right now? What is the actual balance?
The actual balance would be whatever we have for, I don't have a cash balance report for today. So whatever that is, minus $19,000. So in order to make it whole, make it whole, we need to, according to the finance officer, and that's what we're going to go with, we need to have an infusion from Pilt of $25,414.44.
All right, so the problem is this, okay? Let me just walk you through what I was tracking when I did the budget and what I was tracking up to this moment. There was $1,700 in that litigation fund left over from the end of last budget. And my request was that that carried over and stayed in that litigation fund. Then with the $19,000 from Pilt, which, I was here, I'm pretty sure you guys voted to approve that, that puts us a little over $20,000. Beaverhead County has contributed $5,000. So we are now at about $26,600. That should be in the litigation fund right now and you wouldn't have to transfer anything out of Pilt, anything new. You could just approve the claim. I understood that the, for whatever reason, the $1,700 didn't carry over and the $5,000 was in general revenue and it wasn't in there. So I, the $25,000 warrant that you guys have there, I withdrew that and submitted a separate, a different one for $19,000 saying, let's pay that at least now until we get this extra $6,000 figured out. So that's the state of the world as I understood it before walking in here. I've never, ever, Debbie's never said to me that the $19,000 was never approved and not supposed to be put in there. So that's brand new information. I'm not sure that it's accurate.
Well, here's what I do remember from that meeting, Corey, that you did say you wanted to check with Bob Denning.
Yeah.
Did that ever happen?
No, because you guys then said, we're going to approve Pilt. I thought you guys voted to approve it.
I think, what I remember, we're under the standard of we were waiting for you to talk with Bob Denning before we made that. That's how I remember it happening.
Okay, well, shortly thereafter, $19,000 has been online balance sheet from really probably September to today. So I believe you guys did approve it.
And I understand how you would think that. But instead of rehashing, let's go ahead and move forward today. So some of the money that you say was in your account, you have to remember that so far this year, $4,769.53 has been paid out in wages. So it's not just this one bill. So we can make this whole by a vote to transfer $25,414.44 from Pilt to this litigation fund. It's a standalone fund. And then we can pay off the bill in full. Is that good with everybody? It's a solution that should leave everybody happy.
That's fine. I mean, obviously I want to get the bill paid off. I'm a little concerned that this is the first I'm hearing about it. Sherry has met with Debbie twice on this specific issue. I requested a meeting with her to in fact work this out because we have some budget amendments that are going to have to be done. I haven't heard back from her. So I guess I'm a little frustrated. It's like, hey, if this is going on, I'd like to know about it before I come here to a county commission meeting and hear something I've never heard in the last six months when I've specifically been tracking this issue. I don't think we've made a payment since like probably July or August. So I'm specifically tracking this $25,000 that's owed and I'm frustrated that I'm hearing completely different information.
I don't know that we can get to that here in this meeting. I will say that we are aware that there's been conversation between the finance office and your office. But instead of going back and forth, what I suggest we do is have a vote, take care of this and get it done. That's good with everybody.
The final thing I would like to say is there was a person that contributed $200 specifically for this litigation fund. And Beaverhead County contributed $5,000. I want to ensure they understand their contribution is going to pay off this bill.
Have you delivered to Doug the information of the $5,000 that came in and the $200 that came in and where it's to go? Then that will be done. Whether, again, I don't have the report that shows that detail. I also was not aware that you would be bringing this forward today. So I'm, you know, it just leaves us in a position of not necessarily having the reports for that. So we'll follow up with finance and we will find out where that's at. As long as you talk to Doug, he will put the money in the correct accounts. So that should be fine.
Okay, there's another issue that's going on here that has to be corrected. So it's part of this fund and that's kind of what's kept me a little concerned. So when I submitted my budget memo, what I specifically asked for last year, this year, was the, any of my military double pay salary that I was contributing back to the county would not go to the Barris fund. It would go to payment for the new prosecution software. That hasn't happened. That money's been going into the Barris fund. And this is pursuant to a meeting with Debbie about a month or two ago. And so I said, well, no, that fund is supposed, that money's supposed to go into paying off this software because we had these other funds that we were aware of that got me to the $25,000. And so there has to be a budget memo or amendment for that is what Debbie has told us. Secondly, we, my office received a reimbursement of $4,900 from attorney's fees paid last year. And we, and that money's been deposited into the general revenue. Now, that money, when it came back, I had also identified in the budget process that that money may be reimbursed to us. And I asked that it be again available for expert witnesses because we have a case, we've now had the case that was, required us to hire an outside expert witness. And with the time that came in, I just mentioned Commissioner Ford, okay, this money came in, what do we do with it? And he said, well, just deposit it, but keep track of that if you have this unexpected or this expected expense to come up. That expense was we had to hire a mental health evaluator for the Ostrau case, which was sentenced to all over the newspaper. So that funding is still in the general revenue and not in my expert witness revenue. And I need that to pay this additional cost. So that one, I don't know because it's revenue that came into my office, if it needs to be a budget amendment or what it needs to be. Ultimately, what I don't want to do is I don't want at the end of the budget year to have someone say, you spent more than your revenue because we had an additional $4,900 reimbursed to us that ordinarily wouldn't have been reimbursed to us. We got an extra $4,900 in revenue, I guess.
So with all these, what we can do is discuss this with Debbie. So if you could give us a chance to do that first. The $17,000 from the money that were paid over the statutory limits set in Title 10. From our discussion with Debbie, she did not put that into this account.
Okay.
She understood that was to go to the software. So that should be going into your account, that payback. The $4,900, I believe from discussions again with the finance officer, and this was head with your staff, that is statutory. So we can talk with them again, but I believe it's set in the bars, which is how they define.
No, I understand that it goes to, it gets deposited in the revenue, general revenue. I'm not saying that.
You don't have your own revenue fund. You're in the general fund.
That's what I just said. I understand that.
Okay, good.
What I'm saying is that that additional revenue, which was not expected, and because county attorney doesn't go out and get revenue, I need to be able to utilize that revenue to pay this, for this extra criminal case that cost us unexpected amount of money.
We'll work with the finance office. They'll work with Bob Denning and we'll go ahead and get you an answer on what they're allowed to do by statute and by the bars. So moving on to what is on the agenda. We have a bill in front of us for Park Deets. We have a plan to put $25,414.44 into that account so that we can pay it off. Is there a desire to move forward with that plan or is there a desire to maybe alter the plan in some way? Or a whole other discussion that you guys would like to have?
Do we need to do the budget amendment first?
No, we don't. Because we're actually addressing it right here. So no, we don't. In fact, Debbie in her email would have said, these are the steps you need to follow.
Okay.
So I'm just, and I can share with you her email. Do you want to see that?
I guess I'm wondering why the payroll for Kelsey is included in this question because that was separately budgeted and is a different issue than paying the outside costs for the litigation.
It's in the same fund. I believe that was also a discussion between your office and finance. And I think what we need to do is get that back in writing so that everybody's on the same page.
I'm frustrated at how complicated this is. It need not be. And.
I agree with you there. I think we have a solution and I'd like to take care of it and get this bill paid.
All right, well, my main concern is people who donate, I want them to understand their money is going specifically to the purpose for which they donated the money. That's what I want to also accomplish in addition to paying this off.
That was established and there's no question that that is exactly what's happening.
All right.
Well, you know what? We'll put that in writing too, Corey.
All right, is it ready to move forward then?
Yes, please.
All right, so then I will move that we make a payment of $25,414.44 to Park Deets to pay this in full.
I'll second the motion.
And friendly amendment, this will come from the $100,000 that we put into the fund next year. It's been moved and seconded to put $25,414.44 from Pilt into the litigation fund to pay off the Park Deets bill. This will come from the $100,000 for the fund next year, next fiscal year. It's removed and seconded. Is there any public comment?
Tim Ravindol, Read Out News. Just a real quick, I'm going to plead for a little bit of an explanation on this because this is the first public meeting that the term Park Deets has been brought up. I know that the Barris page was mentioned earlier by our county attorney. We really, as citizens, don't have any idea what this is going on. I want to take that one step further and that's why I'm speaking on behalf of Read Out News. Several meetings ago, I was contacted and brought that forward to the commission regarding a donation to Broadwater County from Granite County. Since that time, I have talked to the inquiry on what's going on there with that $25,000 that was donated. And I also talked to Blaine, who is the county attorney in Granite County. And there is some confusing on how the commission has been documenting and recording these donations. So my question to the commission today on the Park Deets agenda item is what is it? And how does it fit into the overall scheme of where things are at with the previous donations and how it all plays out? Because people are clueless. Thank you.
Thank you. Too many other public comments. Please state your name again for the reference.
Well, I don't want a public comment. I'd be happy to answer that question. Would you like me to answer the question?
Yeah, if you'd let people know that can't see you, who you are, I would appreciate it.
I'm Corey Swanson and the, first of all, what does Park Deets mean? It's a, he specifically is the head of an organization that is, they're experts in the field of mostly mental health and forensic, criminal forensic issues. So that's how we located and then hired and paid the expert witness that we had in the Barris case. So when we say that, when we say Park Deets, it's, we're actually paying off the bill owed for the expert witness who evaluated the case, testified, did all the things in the last year. The $25,000 that was contributed from Granite County specifically went into and was used to help pay off that bill. and was used to help pay off that bill. And that $25,000 was received and was spent specifically for that purpose. I am working on the information to provide a response to the inquiry from the person from Granite County. And got derailed and did some other things, and I haven't responded to her. So, that's, that's my, either I'll respond directly or I'll provide information for the commission to respond. So, that's where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Public comment? All right. Those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Right, we generally only have two signatures. So, if I may pass this to you, Darrell, and ask you to add your initials, we'll go ahead and get that to Debbie and Michelle at the very end of the meeting. Is Michelle still here? No. Third, all day. Thank you very much. You want these two?
Sure.
Okay, I'll give you all. All right. Next, we have school, school informational sign in the courthouse. Policy for allowing county agencies to display public information in the courthouse. So, we have first a policy. Is Doug here? Nope. All right. Here's a policy. And if you guys are good with that, we can adopt that first. And then, here's the letter. And I'll give you a copy of the letter so you have that in parallel. I only made two, so we'll have to sign one of them. And these are the same ones that we worked on together today in the mail. Yeah, we agreed that we would have a policy in place before sending the letter. So, even if it happens within, you know, couple seconds of each other, we should still do a policy first.
I think so.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve the policy, providing information to citizens. I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve policy establishing which agencies in the county can provide information to the public in the courthouse and under what timeline. Any public comment?
Can we know what this is? Please?
Absolutely.
Could someone read that so that the public knows what that letter says? Thank you.
This is ministerial. It could be just handled over email. It's been the subject of two different commission meetings in the last two weeks. If you had handed me the policy, I'll just read an overview. So, this is a policy for providing information to citizens in Broadwater County. Again, this has been discussed in the last two commission meetings, and this is ministerial. So, as the courthouse belongs to the citizens, it is correct to allow county agencies to share information. Remains a concern, there are few avenues to communicate facts to citizens. The courthouse is a central location and entrusted place to gain knowledge. Therefore, Broadwater County Commissioners shall allow all county political subdivisions, agencies, and departments to display facts in the courthouse. Currently, those agencies include, but are not limited to, the fire district, hospital district, the weed district, the mosquito district, the school board, the county departments and offices. All information displayed shall be factual and data-driven. No one may use the courthouse to display disparaging information against anyone. No one may display incorrect information. As the courthouse is a polling place, all information must be removed from the courthouse 60 days prior to the election. As the commissioner of political practices has interpreted electioneering laws to state commissioners may not answer questions, much less state an opinion about a mill levy subject 60 days prior to an election, all information must be removed from the courthouse 60 days prior to that election. Broadwater County Board of County Commissioners supports the sharing of factual information to help the citizens of Broadwater County to be fully informed on issues and related facts. Broadwater County Commissioners. So, with that, all those in favor of adopting the policy, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Motion carries. And I'll read the letter to, this is to the Townsend School District. Dear Broadwater County School Board members, thank you for asking us to display photos of the school in the county courthouse. We are pleased to grant your, grant your request. As you know, the courthouse belongs to the citizens of Broadwater County. As such, it is a place to get information. The best we can do for our citizens is provide them with as many data-driven facts as possible so they can make informed decisions. However, Montana has strict electioneering laws. The current commissioner of political practices interprets those laws literally. His determination is that county commissioners may not answer questions about a pending mill levy election without violating those laws 60 days prior to the election. To further complicate the issue, the courthouse is a polling place. Therefore, we remain happy to allow you to display photos, but they must be removed 60 days prior to the election on March 6, 2020. So, we remain in compliance with Montana code. Thank you again for this opportunity. We stand together as one county for the good of all our citizens. Sincerely. So, the next vote, if you guys are still interested, is to approve the letter and let the school display their photos.
I have one. If you, if you read this, but they must be removed 60 days prior to the election on March 6th, that's the date of removal. You're saying that the election is on March 6th.
I see where you're reading that. So, 60 days prior to, prior to the May, is it May 5th? May 5th election? So, removal shall be?
No later than?
By March 6th. So, let me read the sentence to you guys and tell me if this makes sense. Therefore, we remain happy to allow you to display photos, but they must be removed 60 days prior to the May 5 election. By, so, removal by March 6, 2020.
Yeah.
All right. So, if you guys approve this letter, we can make the editorial change and then sign that this afternoon and get this to the school board.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter as a correction. Thank you.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the letter, allowing the school board to display photos in the courthouse until March 6th. Is there any public comment? Public comment? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. So, we'll make those edits and then just have it in the office. We can sign it and then scan it to Darren. I'll give those both to you, Ann. All right. Next, we have Heather McMurty, Public Health, Farmers Market Support. And Heather, you can either come to the podium or sit down at the table with us, whatever you prefer.
So, last year was our first year for the Senior Farmers Market Program, and it went really well. I had a lot of happy vendors, and I had a lot of happy people that signed up for it. I had 20 spots, and I had 15 that signed up. So, we were impressed with that for the very first year. And so, I met with the Townsend Farmers Market meeting on, last week, and they want to do it again, the vendors. I had two more vendors sign up, so I'm up to seven vendors now.
Nice.
And so, the market will be from June 4th through September 24th, every Thursday, from 3:00 p.m. to 6:30, and over at the Wi-Fi Park. And so, what I need is, what I, I needed for last year was we need liability insurance. And the county provided that last year, so that's what I'm asking for again now, so that we can move forward with this.
Nice.
Yeah.
That Farmers Market is very popular.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, and the seniors really enjoyed it. They get $50 worth of free coupons. Each coupon is $2. And we went over it again. Jackie Stokel came down from the state, and she did, you have to go through a training. And so, she trained the two new vendors. And so, anyway, they all wanted to do it, so.
And would you explain that program so that anybody who wasn't here, we know what it is, but anybody who wasn't here last year knows what the program is?
So, what it is, is that you have to fill out an application, and it goes by your income, and it's for 60 years and older. And so, if you qualify, then you get $50 worth of free coupons. And it's a federal agency ran program, and so, we're paid through the state and through Jackie Stokel. And so, you get, so then they can use it, the beginning, they can use all of the coupons at the same time, or they can spare them out through the whole entire June through September. So, yeah. And I had a great, like I said, I had 15 that signed up last year. I can have 20, and that's what we're going to go through, go for again, and so that's $1,000. So, yeah.
And this is for vegetables, right?
Fresh produce only. So, no baked goods, no, no goodies. But, so, my vendors that sign up, they have to sell the fresh produce, and they are given a list of what they can choose.
You've done tremendous work, Heather.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I'm not going to say about the Farmers Market, because really everything you touch, you turn to gold.
Thanks, Heather.
So, thank you.
Yeah, I've enjoyed it. So, hopefully, we can fill 20 spots this year. So, yeah.
Yeah, you're close.
Yes. So, the vendors that do sign up, they have a three-year, they're covered for three years. So, they didn't have to go redo the new training. So, just the people that signed up have to do the training. And they all did it the other night. Jackie signed them off. So, we're good to go.
Fantastic.
So, if you guys will hold the liability insurance again, then we're good to go. So.
So, we should probably have a vote since it's on the record.
I guess I will move that the county provide liability insurance for the Farmers Market.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to provide the liability insurance for the Farmers Market this year? Excuse me, is there any public comment? Public comment? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Go forth and conquer.
Perfect, thank you. So, when we get closer to the start date of June, I'll come and get the paperwork I need like I did last year.
Perfect.
Okay.
Good work. Thank you. Thanks, Heather. All right. Brooke Dolan, victim witness advocate, signed grant for services. And it looks like you're going to join us at the table if you need to. And I have your contract in front of me. So, this has been going on for many, many years. And what this is, is the Board of Crime Control Grant that funds your department, what you do. And we just need to, this is a two-year grant, and we'll just sign it. So, this has been available for review. And we just need a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the grant from the Montana Board of Crime Control for the victims, victim for witness advocate.
And I will second.
It's been moved and seconded to sign the grant for the victim witness advocate from the Board of Crime Control. Is there any public comment? Any public comments?
Once again, Tim Ravindol, Broadwater County citizen. How much money were we talking?
It is $96,000. This is for two years.
Yes.
Yes. Any other public comment? Public comment? All right. Those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. All right, that was painless. Anything to add to the, anything to add to the whatever?
I think so. I, one thing I guess I would say is that once I get this award packet back to the board, then they will reimburse the last two quarters.
All right. I think I've got all the spots signed, so we'll just have it recorded with Ann. And then we'll get you a copy very, very shortly this afternoon.
Okay, I guess the only other thing is that I do need the original signatures.
Okay.
If that's okay?
Yeah. We'll make a color copy for us and keep that.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, Brooke. Good work. Keep it up.
Thank you.
And is there anything else from the board?
I guess one thing that I have to report back to you guys, you know, we talked about the health department server.
Oh, yes.
That needed to be replaced. And so, I think I sent the email chain of the, of the questions from Josh. And the question was, is could they use our server here in the courthouse? And he said, "No, it's not." One is not physically connected, and the other is, because of privacy issues, they have to have their own separate server. So, I guess that can be something on the, on the agenda maybe next week or when we do it again, but we need to fund that, I guess, because that wasn't, wasn't in, tweaks this budget.
Yeah. I kind of thought it was included in the list of computers and all the upgrades we were doing anyway. But we can certainly put it on the agenda just for a quick vote to add it.
Yeah.
And then that, there's no question. So, that will be added in two weeks. Does that mess up, Josh?
No.
Okay.
No, I think, I think they're fine.
Okay.
I think they got a lot of work to do.
Yeah, I think we do too.
And then, I guess the other thing for next week's agenda is for mental health. We'll discuss that.
Yes. All right. Anything, Mike, from you?
No.
All right. So, we just have one other, again, this is same as, as some of the other stuff, this is ministerial, but this is the letter to Department of Revenue for the Raidersburg Historical Society.
Yeah.
And Shirley, go ahead and read this out loud. Myrna, this letter is to inform you, the Broadwater County Board of County Commissioners, voted on December 23, 2020 to remove the taxable value from tax number 0007002394 for Raidersburg Historical Preservation, Inc., and number 00007C00058 for Broadwater County. Solid waste fees are to remain attached to the property and charged. Raidersburg Historical Preservation Society folks will provide Department of Revenue with the required documentation to be permanently removed from the tax rolls as a viable and active 501(c)(3) corporation. Thank you for all you do for Broadwater County. We appreciate the opportunity to work together. So, we just need to sign that and send it to Department of Revenue, and probably Raidersburg should get a copy as well.
Yep, perfect.
And that's at the request of the county department for the treasure. And we've already agreed to, to do it, so we don't, I don't need the vote to sign the letter. letter. All right. It looks like our meeting, the public portion of our meeting is over.